...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And quickly, call roll. Commissioner Webster?
Here.
Commissioner Waltempton?
Here.
Commissioner McMaster?
Here.
Commissioner Plowman?
Here.
Commissioner Root?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here, thank you.
The record show all commissioners are present, and I will move on to the approval of the agenda, but before I entertain a motion, could I add, entertain a motion to put on file to add Chiwasi County COVID-19 employee isolation and quarantine policy?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. We have a motion of support by Commissioner Webster.
Where did I get me put that in?
It will be item H under Finance Administration. That's okay. All right, any objections to that at all? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, and it is approved. And I'll move on to a special presentation from John McConner from 44 North regarding our options with. Thank you, Karen. What's yours?
Come up to the table.
Yep.
Thank you, appreciate it. Well, I hope everybody's having a good summer so far with the craziness. I want to lower my mask if that's okay.
That's fine.
I haven't figured out how not to fog my glasses up yet. Well, thank you. We've been doing some work. We got slowed down a little bit by COVID. We started working, Commissioner Plowman and myself started working on some numbers, and then COVID hit and things slowed down, and then we revisited with Dr. Boggs and Commissioner Plowman on opportunities. What could we do to help the county with their benefit offering? So, 44 North, who are, was anybody on the WebEx today or the virtual MAC Conference? Anybody attend that? So, we were on that. So, we're, it was interesting. So, Steve Curry tried his best to give a, you know, the conference, it was supposed to happen in real, but it was a Zoom meeting. So, and we presented on, one of the things I'm going to talk today, we presented on. So, we work with over 100 county entities in the state of Michigan. It's probably about 60% of our business that we do. Been doing it for years, you know, from road commissions to counties and medical care facilities and the likes of. We work with the road commission in town, work with Clinton County neighbors over there for years. And one of the, one of the goals was, can we help the county with their benefits? And if we can, can we also bring savings, right? So, that was the big goal. And, and we did, we found some things that I wanted to talk to you about today, four things, and to be specific. But, so you know, we didn't look at everything. We looked at dental, we looked at vision, you know, all the lines of coverage. So, really, the opportunities are within the medical prescription, and then also administrative support, and then also employee support, education. Okay? So, the outline in front of you goes over the four main areas. So, in our world, when dealing with a carrier, we understand the dynamics of your contracts, collective bargaining, and that you can't change benefits just because you want to, right? You got to bargain. And so, we know that. So, the things that I'm going to talk to you about today will not change the benefit levels for any of your employees. It won't change their access to getting prescriptions, it won't change any of the ideas that I'm going to present, the benefit level, not the deductible, not co-pays, any of that. And the network, the carrier, we're not talking about, we're talking about tweaking the funding strategies and adding additional support. So, number one is, when we looked at your data, we looked at, okay, you're self-funded. Are there things that we can do to help deliver the same benefit with Blue Cross Blue Shield and bring dollars back to the budget? Because now that we're with Public Act 152, and we're tied at the hip with cost shares, so if dollars come back to the county, however you do your cost shares, somehow it's going to trickle down to the employees and help them, correct? Helps the county, helps the employees. So, we looked at a health reimbursement arrangement. And it's not a new concept, it's just a different way to fund health insurance, right? So, it's been around for about 20 years. It's a, it's a tax code. It falls in Section 105 of the tax code that says an employer is allowed to reimburse employees for pre-tax for medical expenses, right? So, a health reimbursement arrangement funds the healthcare a little bit different. So, you're self-funded right now, what we're, what we're, the idea is to go fully insured with a higher deductible plan, but then when an employee has an experience, it gets reimbursed down to their zero deductible. You guys have really good benefits, really rich benefits, and we want to preserve that. So, and there's a, there's a mechanism that we've designed that reimburses seamlessly to the actual provider. So, the employee's not involved in the reimbursement process, it happens behind the scenes. But what is important, if you choose to go that direction, is education. So that they know what's happening behind the scenes and understand it, but it delivers the same benefit level. Blue Cross Blue Shield, Community Blue, same network, same doctors, zero deductible. And that's, that's the goal. By doing that, though, we were able to, with the data that we have right now, we were able to expose about $450,000 in difference, in cost saves, right? So, that's a meaningful number. So, that's strategy one. Strategy two is high-cost drug management. It's called AERO, Alternative Reimbursement. So, we also discovered, if you look at your packet and page, the next page behind the agenda is just a description of AERO. It's a program we started about five years ago. We do it with about 40 partners. Last year, we saved our partners about $19.5 million in high-cost drugs. So, what we do is, we identify the high-cost drugs, and then we find other ways to deliver those to the employee. And then if we're successful, we do it at zero cost. So, we're basically taking a high-cost drug, removing it from utilization, and when that happens, we actually also waive the employee's copay. So, and it's, and so we look for patient assistance, we look for coupon programs, we also have an international program, which is voluntary, that employees can sign up for. It's interesting, the high-cost drug situation that we're in right now, might get addressed in the near future with elections. It has never been addressed, though, with, you know, the last 10 years, and it just keeps going up. So, we had to find a solution for our partners to say, hey, these drugs are crushing it, what can we do about it? And this is a solution that we figured out. So, 2% of the drugs that are filled, it's 2% are high-cost drugs, but the high-cost drugs represent about 40 to 50% of what you spend on prescriptions, right? So, when we looked at your data, we identified drugs. So, we identified about $250,000 of high-cost drugs that we could remove from the spend, from your spend, and also remove the cost for the employees. So, if you turn the page over, you'll see in 2019, we have our top 20 drug savings, and then next to it is top 10 international. This is where somebody said, hey, I want to get my prescriptions, and I'm going to get them international. It's voluntary, though, that's something they choose to do. So, on your plan right now, in the top 20 drug, the first two are on your plan, Humira and Emerald. Cosentix is on your plan as well, and there's other ones. But, just to give you an idea, so Humira, it's a, it's a life-improving drug. If an employee's taking it or gets prescribed it, it's going to improve their life dramatically. You know, it's for the Crohn's, it's for the arthritis, those type of things, right? But it costs $4,000, maybe $80, $4,800 a month. It's a lot of money, right? Emerald costs about $3,800 a month. And then if you go down to Cosentix, it's $6,000 a month. So, we know that employees have to have those prescriptions. We don't want to interrupt that. What we want to do is figure out a different way to get it to them. It's not disruptive to them, but it's very disruptive to the spend that you guys, the dollars you're spending to get those prescriptions. And that's high-cost drug management. So, there's, there's about eight contracts that are taking those prescriptions now. So that if you guys choose to deploy the strategy, there'll be some communication from us to them to help them get these prescriptions for free, and it pulls it off the plan, right? Now, if one has signed to the plan, let's say we do this strategy, and in March, somebody goes onto Humira. We monitor the drugs daily. So, any drug, any generic drug that's over $400, or any branding drug that's over $1,000, it comes on, and we get a, we get a daily feed, and we look at it. And an alarm goes off that says, hey, there's a person on Humira. And then we do an outreach program to make them aware of the program that, hey, you can get Humira for free, and it also won't cost the county the, you know, $40,000, $4,500, or whatever it might be, lesser copay. So, that's, in a nutshell, that's the AERO program, right? And it is the most impactful thing that we've seen in the last three years in healthcare to help people afford this thing.
Yes, sir. You could ask questions here?
Absolutely, please do.
So, for most normal low-cost prescription drugs, whether it's for blood pressure, or it's antibiotics, whatever, we get AERO at a local pharmacy, we're going to continue to get AERO?
No different. Take a card? Yeah.
Okay, but if you have some high-end prescription, then you may have to mail order, right?
Well, actually, typically, some of the prescriptions are mail order just because of the nature. But then our concierge, AERO's concierge, will help the employee with that. And once you set it up, it lasts for 12 months. So, if we find the assistance, then it lasts for 12 months, and it's an annual thing that you re-up. But to your point, 98% of the drugs that you fill right now, you go down to the pharmacy, put your card down, you pay your 10 bucks. You go down, or 20 bucks, whatever, for, exactly, yeah, it's, you know, so it's lesser copay, right? So, that doesn't change at all. That's the same program. It's the high-cost ones that we're fighting. You know, we've been trained as a society to pay attention to, I call it, and this is no disrespect, we just, the drug companies have trained us to pay attention to the peanuts. You know, the, do a generic, save money on that. But if you take a generic from 10 bucks down to 7 bucks, that's not going to affect the budget, and that's not going to affect the person's, you know, what's in their pocket. But if you take a Humira, and you take it for $4,700, and it goes away, and the employee pays no copay, that's a good thing. That's a good thing for the plan, that's a good thing for the employee. So, that's, that's strategy number two. And then the, the other two are the service, additional service, if you will. So, it's education and communication. We, I've got a staff of about 110 people, we've got offices throughout the state, and when, when we work with a county or a county entity, we bring the team, and we make sure that we're educated. You guys have great benefits, we want to make sure your employees understand that, and that, and that they know how good they are, right? Because when you have a zero deductible and you compare it to anything else, it's hard to compare. There's really no comparison, because it's only $250, $500, $1,000, or an HSA. So, we want to make sure that we endorse the offering that you have, but we also want to take care of questions. And we also want to give them access to people 24/7 that can help them with problems. Health insurance is a messy world, right? So, we want to give them access to that help. So, not internally, when we take care of the education, as much as the county would like us to. We're not going to come in and say, this is what we have to do. It's a collaborative effort. Do you want us to do open enrollments? Do you want to do it through paper? You want to do it through electronic? Do you want to do open enrollment meetings in person? Do you want to do them Zoom? Do you want to do a recording? Do you want to do a webinar? All those things, we have the ability to do to support your employees, so that they have a good experience. And also, we want to educate them about the new offerings that you might afford, just so they understand, and understand the benefit. And then number four is, we assign patient advocates to our partners. So, a patient advocate has just said, it's like a concierge, if somebody has a problem with their health insurance or any of the lines of coverage, except for retirement, we don't do that, they have access to somebody 24/7. So, if they call up and say, hey, I don't understand my EOB, we take care of that. Or, hey, I've got a claim, I'm not sure I should be paying this. They send it to us, our patient advocate goes into action, either fights a claim or verifies that it's accurate, gets back to the employee and says, hey, it's accurate, or no, you're not supposed to pay this, it was supposed to be preventative. And there's money owed back to you and/or the county for, for those charges. We track that. In fact, for the patient advocates in the 24/7 call center, we track it because it's part of the compensation. So, the better they do, the more, it's a component of the compensation. Last year, we clawed back about $2 million in misbuilt claims for our partners. So, that's money coming back to our partners and their employees back in their pocket. And we track it monthly. This year is, we're about at a million, it's a little off because COVID and things got a little weird, but it's still, it's still happening. So, there's, and there's a number of other things, too, that we do to help. One is, we talked about it in our meeting, was compliance. And I've got a legal team of eight people, and we'll help with the HR questions and the legal compliance. One of the things that we did identify that's very common is there, we need to put a RAP summary, summary plan document in place. And what that is, is it's a legal instrument that we do for our partners, it's part of our relationship, that covers all the things that you offer your employees, from voluntary benefits to medical, dental, vision, RX. And it's an instrument that if you're ever asked from an auditor, you know, like the IRS or Department of Labor, the very first thing they're going to ask for is, where's your RAP summary plan document? And by having that and showing it to them, it gives them confidence that, okay, these guys are, they're serious about what they're doing. And that's something that we would, we would attack as soon as, if you guys invite us to be a partner, and we'd get on that right away. Ramble, trying to be quick, because I know you guys got an agenda. Is there any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
And you probably said this, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
It just hasn't sunk in.
Yep.
So, tell, tell us how you go from a drug that costs $4,800 a month to zero. How do you get there? And are they just taking the same drug?
Yeah, yeah, exact same drug. So, the, what happens is, big pharmacy, like a Humira, is they put dollars aside for patient assistance. So, and there's, you have to find it, but once you find it, then you know it's there. So, there's income requirements. So, for an individual with Humira to get the Humira for free, it's about $78,000 in income or below, you have access to that, this is the first level. A family of four, I think it's about $170,000. So, it's, so it's generous in the income and below where you can access these patient assistance programs. So, and there's a ton of them out there. I mean, the list that I have is just for the top 20. So, let's say that somebody makes too much money, then we go the route of a coupon, which all these, these big farms have coupons too. And like a Humira coupon is worth about $20,000. So, we would go after the $20,000, and there's no income requirement on that. So, but this is all part of the AERO concierge team of working. When we talk about these high-cost drugs, in your group, it probably is five people? Seven people? It's not a ton, a ton of people, right? But it represents a huge number. So, that's, and then last year is international. But that's something, that's their choice. And typically, once people find out about it, they take advantage of it. So, yes, sir?
Okay, so the deductible, when we had talked, there was a conversation earlier before this presentation, there was talk that employees would have a card, maybe they wouldn't have a card. So, they're not going to have a card, this is all behind the scenes, or they won't have a card?
Yeah, so, great, another great question. So, and this is getting into the mechanics of it, the education part. So, what will happen is, they'll have their Blue Cross Blue Shield card if you deploy the strategies, and then they'll have an information card. It doesn't have any value to it, except for it says, hey, we have a plan that is Blue Cross Blue Shield, Community Blue, it's got a $5,000 deductible, and my employer is reimbursing it to zero. And then, and then one of the reasons we have our call center and patient advocates is in the, in the, it doesn't happen a lot, it's actually rare where a doctor's office or hospital don't understand the process. They can either call us, or the employee can say, hey, can you call and explain to them what's going on? We explain it to them, and they're, and they're fine.
So, it's not actually like they have a card?
It's not.
It's just another insurance card?
No, so, I'll give you, I'll give you the next phase of how it works. So, let's say you go into the hospital, Blue Cross Blue Shield, for a, knock on wood, family picket, you busted your ankle in playing volleyball, and it's a pretty good one, right?
I guess so. Yeah, sure.
So, you go in, you get set, and you know, what, let's say there's surgery involved, and it's a $10,000 bill, right? So, when you're done, you're leaving, and the hospital says, okay, so we got the charges for $10,000 bucks. They send an electronic data feed to Blue Cross Blue Shield, or whatever care it is, but Blue Cross in this case. And Blue Cross catches it and says, okay, yep, we see. They check the codes, they check, you know, everything they're supposed to check, and then they say, well, we've got this arrangement that says there's a 45% discount on that $10,000 bucks. So, they send electronic data feed back to the hospital that says, you're allowed to charge this person $10,000 less a 45%. So, $5,500 bucks, let's say. And then, their plan design kicks in. At the same time that Blue Cross sends that feed to the hospital, they send it to us. And we catch it, and our system looks at it and says, okay, Blues says it's okay to charge $5,500 less, whatever the deductible is, there's a zero copay, we'll actually pay the hospital directly the charge of up to the $5,000 deductible. So, the employee needs to be aware that it's happening behind the scenes, so that, you know, nothing's perfect, nothing, you know, things can...
But it's something that they have to monitor, they have to keep, they just have to carry that card into insurance card.
Yep. And typically, anything serious, they're going to, they're going to know ahead of time, not a broken ankle, but if it's like, hey, I got to have a MRI, or I got to have my, my knee replaced, they're going to do a pre-op thing, and the hospital's going to be involved and asked, and there'll be some back and forth between us and the hospital or the carrier. And that's why we have patient advocates.
I would add, I used 44 North in Durand for a long time, and I've been very happy with the money that they've saved the city. And if I didn't have faith in them, I wouldn't recommend it, because I am one of those people that takes one of the drugs listed on that thing. And if I didn't think it was a savings or it was going to work, I probably wouldn't be recommending it.
So, on here it says, among approximately $700,000?
Yep.
Savings, potentially more?
Yeah, it could be. So, so we're in that period with Blue Cross Blue Shield, where we looked at your data, and then, and then we ran numbers, and we got plan designs from Blues, and the, your renewal's coming up. And we don't know what that's going to look like, it's going to happen in September. So, we're going to rerun the numbers and see where that HRA component, the RX, is people that are taking a Humira or those type of drugs, they're on it. It's not like it's going to change dramatically. Another one might pop on, so it could be more, but it won't be less. And I, I just want to be conservative on the HRA concept.
So, so, and then nothing's going to change. So, let's say, let's say we save, we're saving $700,000 out of our budget this year. How does this work with other clients you have, like, next year, it could be 700, it could be 650, it could be 750, or it could be a lot less, it could be a lot more?
Correct. So, it, it, a lot, it could be less, it could be more. When you say a lot, you know, I'd have to, when we get the numbers, define what that means. But what we do is, we look at our book of business and say, okay, what is a typical of a county spending? And we come up with a budget number for, you've got your plan from Blue Cross Blue Shield, you've got your utilization on the HRA, put them together for illustrative rate, no different than you do right now, Blues does it for you with your self-funded plan. So, claims fluctuate, but with, with your plan right now, they fluctuate from 0 to 30,000. That's your spec limit. So, it's like this, where the plan that we would buy, that fluctuate from 0 to 5,000. So, it's smaller fluctuations, right? So, you wouldn't be exposed as much.
Could you, and I'm actually not pinning you down to anything, but could you say, if you say, if you say it was 700,000 this year, how confident are you in saying, for the next three years, we could continue to save you around 700,000? Is that, is that very likely?
Yeah, so, thank you for not trying to pin me down, because I...
My college advert here next year, and what, you're saving 50,000, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, what, what drives that is, so you're going to lower your bar on spending, so you're taking that big, huge chunk of the onion off by doing a different funding strategy. And, you know, claims do fluctuate. Like, this year, you guys are having a hot, you've got a hot year going, a lot of claims. I mean, there are about $1 million over illustrative rates. And so, what we're trying to do is just close that gap from 30,000 down to 5,000. And in a two-year window, three-year window, it typically doesn't blow up, because you don't have as much exposure, so it can fluctuate. So, say, hey, 500,000, 700,000? Yeah, it is. And, and we'll model that. We do monthly reporting on, on all the programs, and then, depending on your, how your board flows, is what type of reporting do you want to see? Is it quarterly? Is it biannally? And report on the performance of the plan.
So, how long will, Brian, when you go with that, how long, you lock into like three-year contract, five-year contract? Three to a year?
Nope, we don't lock you into a contract.
Okay. Because they're a third-party provider of this service, so we're still a client of Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they're just in between us. So, every year, you come back, you report, this is where we work, this is what we recommend, right?
Correct, yeah. We do an executive summary, and, and so what'll be different for you in the next renewal, not that you do any changing, but my responsibility is to show you the marketplace. So, I'm going to come back to you with different carriers. Not that I'm suggesting change due diligence, so that even just in bargaining, you can say, hey, we looked at my plan, we looked at PHP, we looked at priority, and you, you have all the information. That's part of my responsibility.
Also, for your clients, what are most of the carriers? Are you mostly Blue Cross Blue Shield?
It is, it is Blue Cross, for two reasons. One is Blues has about 67% market share, and then secondly is, in government, unions like Blue Cross Blue Shield. But, like Clint Plow, he's been with McLaren for, I've been working with him 10 years, it's been, ever since I've been there. Down in Lansing, there's a couple of our clients that use PHP. Again, the carrier is your choice. My responsibility is to show it, educate about it, and find out different strategies on how to make it work year over year.
So, so what's your, dealing with Blue Cross Blue Shield, I know we have many different, maybe I'm going down too deep here.
Nope.
We have many different packages that we offer, or when you examine that and look at that, what are your thoughts? Stay the same? Can we narrow the number of choices?
There's, there's a couple nuances in each, each plan. So, that would be a discussion we'd have to dig in and figure out, okay, if you narrow it down, you know, having too many is administratively is a challenge. The good news is, most of your population is in two plans. There's a couple other plans that have six in it, maybe 10 in another one, and those could be legacy offerings, where there's a certain thing in that plan that you have to keep until it's, you don't have to anymore. So, but we look at that to make sure that you aren't violating it in contractual agreements.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How does 44 North pay?
Great, great question. So, there's, there's multiple ways. In this scenario, Blue Cross would pay us a commission, and that would be for doing our consulting services, right? And then, on the AERO program, there's a recovery that's tied to diversion. So, if we remove a drug from the plan, there's a percentage that we keep for that. But if we don't, it won't happen. But if, if, you know, there's no savings in AERO, it'll cost you.
I think I called it a brokerage fee.
Yeah, that's kind of what I...
Yeah. So, it's kind of like, I hate to minimize it, because drugs are so much, they're so much more important, but it's kind of like when you do a phone audit from four years ago for your business, and they find $100,000, and they say, hey, we're going to keep 20 cents on a dollar. But if they don't find it, then it doesn't cost you, except for the headache, you're given the paperwork. We'll take it.
Any other questions, Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
One more thing, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you. Appreciate you putting me up front, too.
Thank you. We're starting January 1.
So, can I add to that, too? Yeah, so, the changes that we're talking about are for open enrollment, January 1. And I'll follow up, the administrative things and getting ready for January 1 are something we can start as soon as possible, you know, like the RAP. we can start as soon as possible, you know, like the wrap summer, plan document, action advocacy, getting ready for the open enrollment meetings, and the paperwork and that, that's something that takes time and...
That's not possible.
Yeah, okay.
Very, very good.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
And so it's this time before we commit to our committee reports, and we're looking at an opportunity to kind of address the board, anyone...
See what it says?
Good news.
Good news, yes. Don't we need to hear good news? Well, the state just put out their last COVID, Chaiwase County just put out their last COVID. It's great news. Unfortunately, you have one person in the 70s died with COVID in their system, but we don't know what they died of. Uh, they don't, they don't put any of that data in. So we don't know if she died of a heart attack and had COVID three months ago, or whether she died of an answer and had COVID, uh, maybe not ever, but she was wrong with somebody with COVID. So those things, the state is not giving us. But the good news is, the good news is this, as far as the state goes, I'll start off with that. State of Michigan today put out that we have roughly nine million, 900,000 people who don't have coronavirus. We have less than 100,000 who have gotten, 92,000, something like that. Out of that, most, most are, most didn't even have the symptoms. Some went to the hospital, and then we had some deaths. How many deaths? Less than 7,000 in the state of Michigan. So less than 7,000 people. And those aren't people died of coronavirus, they died within the bodies. So like here in Chaiwase County, when we had had 28 people die, I don't think we can ask, Larry, you guys can ask him, and he'll, he'll, he'll tell you. I don't think, one of them died of straight coronavirus. I think all died of other things. In fact, remember last month, we had the man that was sitting here, and he said that his mom died at home of cancer, and the health departments listed her as COVID, and she was even in the hospital, she couldn't have COVID. We've heard from other people that have been in here, on other COVID deaths, it's not COVID. Uh, we had, uh, uh, one man died of blood clots. It's just right, right on down the list. So the good news is in this county right now, we've got somewhere around 30 cases of, uh, of people who have it, but that means that 67,000, 660 people don't. Uh, so, I, I can't, I can't think how much better news you can have. If I came in, talked to you about how many people had the common cold, it'd be higher. How many people have had the flu? Well, we, we do know that people actually died of the flu during this, and we know a lot of suicides, a lot of suicides. Would have never happened had, had not had this cut, this, this, uh, shutdown on us like a half. So, if nobody else would give it to you, I'll give you the good news right from the, right from the data given, 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 being put out by the county. So as of today, around 30 people have, have it in their system. How many are sick? Talk to those people in the county that, that we know that have had to stay home from the farmhouse, uh, couldn't work, um, just fine, um, yeah. So, again, the last thing is, I wish that there would be a, a, a thing, a process put in, where that you would tell the county, the good news, so they're not scared to death. Every morning they watch, they, they, they read WNEM on here, and it says, "He died last night." But they didn't say it was out of 10 million. So, please, if, if we needed to get that to our people, um, that, that, on life, on life's terms. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. O'Keeber. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this time? All right, hearing that available now, we have our video reports. Uh, so we'll start off with your chairman, Paul Mann, by, by the administration committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to add with recommendations, as we send about 44 North, there are changes to my white, our chair of conference.
Or, or a motion for a second. I'd like to have a moment for discussion of questions this time. I've already talked to that a little bit. All right, hearing that, all in favor of moving item A onto tomorrow's meeting, signify by saying aye. And opposed, same sign.
Move to approve the play-by-play resolution number 20-08-10, as presented.
Motion second, I'd be... Discussion, Mr. O'Keeber.
Let's put a comment, and I mentioned a few of you, and I'm starting to, on the bottom, I'm just gonna approach. I remember some employees who are not 60, and they are 59, and they're 59 and a half, they're 58 and a half. I wanted to know, if this could apply to them, how would I apply to them? Wanna go over there real quick?
Yeah, so, if, if they are within a certain range, I think we have to look at this on a case-by-case basis, but also what the board, what the board's pleasure is. They, they could apply for it. They're not eligible to draw their, um, their retirement until they're 60. They, they left at 59 and a half and retired. They're gonna, they're gonna, either have no income, or they're gonna have to find something to do until they turn 60, and they're eligible to start drawing. That, that is their choice, if they wanna take advantage of it.
And when do they get the 15K, when they, when they were bigger?
They, they would get that, depending, it'd be one of two things, it would either be partial payments in December this year, and the other partial payment in January, or depending on the savings for the work share program, all at the end of this year in December, depending on how much, uh, more we save with work share.
So, and I know, and you have some numbers, maybe potential employees that are 60 and over, but that's a heads-up, you're maybe just as many out there that are just a few years shy. And a lot, a lot of, a lot of the people that are 60 and over, literally are 60 or 61 or 62, right, 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 it's right down that bubble, and there are some that are, so, there may, may, there may be some employees that are interested, so, you know, you have to, I guess, discuss this, or have it come through later.
Yeah, I, I'll bring it together, full list of all the employees, and so on and so forth, those that need it, those that are interested, that, those that don't quite need it, and see what rewards of pleasure is. I mean, I think if you are 58, and you wanna retire, but you're not, you're not gonna draw your pension for another two years, that's uncomfortable, you can find something new for those two years. I mean, not, not dissimilar to what you did.
And my point, I mean, last night, you mentioned how fast you're not talking about it, is I think as long as the legacy cost and the wage savings is greater than the $15,000, I don't know why we wouldn't let anybody, no one wants to.
Cause it would end their, it would end their time in earth, and if they decide to live early, that's also in their obligation earlier, and they would have fewer payouts on longer. So, we're gonna, my, my goal after this is adopted tomorrow, is to set up a series of meetings and interest, gather a list of interested employees through, but we're gonna gather a list of interested employees through a, a, um, survey meeting or something, and then we're gonna have some kind of meeting, where Schloss and myself will go over it with everyone, talk about the particular details, see who's interested, and then I'll be able to set up a full list of the board.
We're not gonna lose, I'm not gonna buy a lot of it.
You will lose some experience, and you, you know, we will have people that...
You're figuring that in there?
Yeah, I mean, you will lose, first of all, Sheriff's Department, I, I, you know, we're looking at, uh, there are approximately six people, I believe, that are eligible to go, and they are all senior individuals.
Mostly, mostly, and staff, so...
Yep, mostly leadership and management.
Leadership and specialty positions, or something, something around just on the road.
However, however, the sheriff has, and the sheriff has made arrangements to either train younger individuals that are shadowing them, because their retirement was, uh, coming sooner or later, or, you know, they're going to be able to, they're just gonna have to train the, the new individuals. Part of it is, without a buyout, the effectiveness of sheriff is gonna be greatly reduced, because those, uh, employees that are advanced in seniority costs substantially more than a new employee. And in this particular budget here, it's gonna make a difference between having two shifts of sheriff deputies or one shift of sheriff deputies. And if six retire, you probably replace, uh, several of them and still save over 15% of what you'd have had otherwise. Uh, so this is, this is the first step in a series of cost-saving measures. Uh, the next will be related to retirement, which I, which I hope to bring before the board in the next couple of months.
So, so speaking of this, then, the, the idea behind this is, obviously, yeah, we have, yeah, employees that are leaving, and the ones that are higher in the level, pretty afraid that under a different retirement system, essentially, in the very near future.
Correct.
Each first year.
Correct.
Or as contracts allow.
I'm, I'm going to be asking on contract amendments to all of the unit contract.
Do you have other comments? I definitely understand, I'm very worried of losing, I think we've been trying to optimize for some of these individuals, but there's always two sides to be, we can think about it, for, for every excellent veteran that we might lose here, there's a young guy that's out there who really needs a job, is excited to get a job, and they're gonna come here with just enough cash, and it's, they're 60-year-olds, started themselves, so, we all been there.
Probably just like you, maybe in your future.
That's exactly right. Same thing. Yeah. Same, same thing. So, all right, hearing that, outside IED, all in favor of moving forward tomorrow, vote a vote, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Very curious.
I move to add, after training pledges as presented.
I can, I can... Motion second, IED, discussion questions. And now, in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Very curious.
I, I move to approve and create our party time CIL position, no, no more than 18 hours approved.
Motion in support of IED, for Mr. Discussion Questions.
Chairman, we still have equal unfurlers, correct? We all voluntarily...
Yes.
Departments like that.
Currently, um, when, when the, when the federal government ended their additional federal unemployment, several departments asked if they continued to furlough, because due to COVID, there's restrictions and scheduling, the volume clientele of certain offices such as courts, because they, they have 14 trials that are slated that they haven't been able to do yet, et cetera. They, they asked for, uh, to continue it, without additional money on their own, and I said, yes. Mainly because it's a continuous cost savings for our county, and volume is down, uh, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense at the current moment, uh, once we are starting like...
By volume, you mean volume of...
Volume of cases, volume of individuals coming in, et cetera. Clientele, for whatever particular department it is.
So we have people furloughed, we're kind of playing layoffs or buyouts. I, I, I don't know how we can be in transition, and at the same time, when we say no, so if anybody is, they say no to, my, my thought is keep coming back, because eventually they will say yes.
So, I mean, as far as that goes, on my side, on the administrative side, it was table, and the clerk was questioned him to come off the table at the pre-divine.
We didn't have to adjourn since I finished my share.
I, I will add one last, you know, one thing to that. I mean, we will be looking closely in October at budget spending throughout the calendar year, because you have a calendar year budget, and any, uh, department, and this is why we've been sending out these line item overages to every department as we go, beginning in October, we will be doing an accounting of all of those to see what last two months are going to look like. And any department that is over budget for, as of October, we will be having to do some layoffs for November and December to make sure that they arrive at their budget endpoint by the end of the calendar year, uh, because we cannot have overages in entire departments. Line items you can balance, uh, across multiple different lines, but the overall budget for that department cannot go over. So beginning in October, we will be looking at that to see where we are with the last two 12ths of the year, once there's a year left.
So I don't know how adding a position, we don't ever audit them, we don't ever audit them, we're, we're looking at possible layoffs for this budget year, and if we're gonna add, I don't know, that's all, that's all we got.
So I think, I can say that if another department came in with a revenue generating stream that had money designated for a position, I mean, we're talking about, there are furloughs because if some offices, the volume is down, the clerk has demonstrated how in her office the volume is considerably up for CPLs, it's a revenue generating stream, and it is designated solely for this purpose. If another department came in with a similar circumstance, I don't see why we wouldn't let them hire, when that's what's...
It's designated only for a position?
It's designated for wages, if I understand, is that true?
So it could be used for wages currently?
As long as those are CPL hours, which it sounds like they have more hours than their current staff is able to cover, more volume than the current staff can cover.
That's what I'm, I haven't, we've been paying most people, somebody's working on CPLs, we bought four boxes the other day, so somebody's gotta be working.
Well, we all...
Are they being paid out of this fund?
There is a percentage that should be going to their payroll.
Is anyone in the sheriff's office that does the fingerprint portion that you charge for being paid?
They get that money, I do not.
How, how do you make exactly the money?
The money is in their line item, because I've thought about taking the fingerprint from my department.
When you're charged, when I'm in the office, I pay your department.
The state allocates the $15, it goes through our funding, and then we have a budget fund that goes into the general fund for the sheriff's department. We do not get that additional money.
Did we settle on a A grade?
I have a lot of question of this, because, um, when we were talking about creating, when I said 15, and the starting rate at the level three is 1477, if this person, I don't understand how they're tied to ask me if there's no benefits, there's nothing attached other than the 19 hours at a rate, that it would be...
It's just a counter penalty, that's...
Oh.
Yeah, that's always good.
So that's the 1477, I'm just asking for 15, as I explained. I will say, may I ask me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, in the three days, I ran the numbers again, 34 new CPLs in renew, and coming in in just a three-day period. Um, Jerry Lynn's been doing a great job, as Abby and I are concentrating on, I don't know, production information, because budgets are so extremely tight. So it's not just CPLs that we process. In fact, earlier in the year, we increased all our fees because of the advantage with the, um, TRILIA Act that took place in 2018, and that impacts on that, and that hasn't slowed down. And this, this is just someone to help out with, I mean, 19 hours is a big deal to us, and my staff doesn't have a problem if they came in at 15, may I ask them, but we have increased in volume, not just in CPL, but certified records, and that's not everything we do, on top of the major gear and options. And that's every other year, or big collection years. I've, I've done my diligence and done everything you guys could ask, and I understand where the mature driver is coming from, but I have come to you long before this COVID ever hit, I came to you. And I'm basically saying, it's extreme at this point, and, um, people, we even asked the deputies to hold people down at the main level, or any CPLs were miracleizing, says at 4:30, because I need them out of there by 5:00. And even at that, they don't leave, they don't get out of there by 5:00.
I would suggest, Jerry Lynn, maybe that, that you don't furlough people.
They're not furloughing, that's no...
You, you did say you're furloughing.
They had no choice but to not furlough. I asked Dr. Boxer if they could not furlough, and they are part of a unit initially, so the minute they got permission to not furlough, they went back to hold on.
They should have that, because we even had no one permission not to furlough.
Yes, we did, because they didn't have enough, uh, trained individuals in the rotation.
It sounds like we don't have it.
Well, anyone who will have enough trained people, and we're gonna do it again, and everyone who acts furlough, and things like that, because there are people who are all trained, and we can... These are people who are all be uh in training and people who certify.
But what I'm hearing is we can't get them on the clerk's office, so I would suggest that they not be part of the program.
Do they affect the others, the clerks on the court side? My understanding is that they are part of the unit, so I mean they don't have a problem with it, but I just am asking.
I have to look into that because when when we furlough, they will have to, clerks on the court side will have to follow uh the district or circuit court upstairs and they will be furloughing.
Yeah, they've continued to furlough.
Yeah, they have.
They've continued to furlough because they know that this is helping out the county.
And they'll go for that. Definitely also because they furlough. And right now they're they're recommending a retroactive payment to August. So for those people that voluntarily furloughed, probably give them an additional compensation check from the whatever through the state.
So I have a couple of questions, a couple of statements. I know I know how busy the clerk's offices are, I know how busy both sides are. Have they been up there this week? Have they been up there last week? There is an increase in C P L and 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 I know that two of those departments are there sitting on site waiting. And when I go through the courthouse, the clerk's office on both sides, the office always has people waiting on site, people with restrictions or a lot of the offices don't. But I have two points I want to make, or one's a question and then one's a point. First on the question is, if this is a designated C P L clerk, nineteen hours, are they only doing C P L stuff? And that's what the, or will they be shifted to another stuff?
Very well, because they'll be the C P L.
The legal can only do C P L stuff?
No, they can do other stuff.
So they can use C P L, you can use C P L funds to over over rely on or just C P L?
Anyone that's function, the C P L function is a percentage. But with this person, we would have them working on the C P L function mainly right now. Get them trained and functioning and every C P L that walked in that door, they would do it.
So for what, in the next year or forty hours, they either have time or what hours are you thinking like they're doing that every day or they're gonna do it three days a week or?
Well, because we have election training, we would talk to the candidate, but we were looking at two full days and then the remainder of three hours, um kinda see what they were with the flexibility. Because during election season, like I have to do more trainings in October, that takes two of us out doing very detailed training for several days. So that we would we would work according to what else was going on in the office.
I guess and I know I know we can't micromanage, but I I would like to see what would make sense at least to me is that working not just two, three days a week, but they're in there whenever repeat times are five days a week or four days a week, but regardless, that's not, I mean, that's not our our place to say that.
Well, if we're talking about C P Ls being up and people are coming out, so now you're gonna say we're only gonna limit it to two days a week?
No, I'm saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You have somebody there Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
So come between uh ten and noon and you can, every day of the week, and you can get it?
No, but if they're there from from ten to.
This is more of an inconvenience on the person that wants to come get the C P L than them having to wait a little while.
I'm not saying they have to wait, I mean, I'm just saying if you have them there every day from ten until three, when they take a lunch, that's that's twenty hours and this would be for nineteen hours. Maybe that's the peak time. I don't know. I would hate to just see a C P L clerk only, like you say, only there on Monday, Tuesday, so that's the best time to go get your C P L because life doesn't work that way. And and we don't have control over that, but I would like to see that this person is spread out throughout the week. The second part is, we talked about adding employees in in this office, we've talked about this for a while. It's part of our budget savings, this part, and this is part of layoffs and this is everything else. I think that there are other offices where accounting's office is understaffed. I firmly believe we have other offices that are still understaffed. I don't know how we figure that out. I don't know how we do efficiency study, but I know there are other offices that have. Her office is busy and there's people on the hall and then there's other offices that should have reduced workload because nobody's there, technology improvements and everything. And just part of the bigger picture, yes, she's asking for one, but I believe there's offices where we need to look at reductions. And and I, like I said, I I've thought about, I've thought about going and getting counts from 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 the security guys because everyone knows where they're going. I've thought about sitting in, when I don't have anything else going on, sitting in the courthouse, clicking who's going into what offices, sitting up in the middle of the auction. I I don't know. I don't know how we figure this out, but I really think that there needs to be a realignment or a study of efficiency, something. Not saying that we're going to get rid of employees, but maybe they need to be shifted to another office. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Another commissioner, discussion? Okay. Okay, so I'll take my opportunity to say what I want to say, also to you, you know that I've been supportive of this for several months now. I think we gotta get you some help in the uh your department, especially in the election year. That said, wanted to make it very clear that we do have fifteen percent cut. We gotta do it to this amount of money. Let's make sure that if we grant this position to you, that we're still able to make the right cut so that's fair for all departments. Okay? Good. That's all I'm saying is that we need to make sure that we're fair. And if we give you this employee, that we still follow the guidelines that we're doing. And if you need help with anything that you don't want, get a little guy, we'll send him over to you if we have to make sure we get this down and done. So that it isn't necessarily adding an employee when we can't afford it. It's adding an employee because you're the department head and we don't want to micromanage. You know your department, your budget, and you can finagle the money the way you need to and still operate in, as Commissioner McMasters said, peak efficiency. I've never been more than one in a micromanaging department, so I think you can handle it. So I'm going to want to support this as long as we meet that. What I wouldn't want to have happen is come January first, we didn't make the fifteen percent cut and we were over budget. Then you'll probably lose this employee, you know what I mean? So we just want to work together and make sure that this goes the right way. But I just want to vote, so. Hearing no other discussion?
There's one I had and I know um the clerk mentioned this, but fee increases. I will say, um and it didn't happen right away, this has been gradual over the last couple of years. But Caroline has, when it has gone to fee increases or technology improvements or looking at, working with me on a reducing cost for mail program, all this stuff. I'm not saying the other department heads haven't done that, but she has stepped up to to help with budget savings. So it isn't, it isn't like she hasn't been working to save money, so I just want to put that out there also.
She's around the rest of others, uh as well. Multiple other department heads are going their part, I mean, we're sitting here glad handing like, you know, she's the only one saving money.
I'm not saying she's the only one.
Everyone is. We've got department heads in this room that are saving money.
Hearing no other discussion on this topic? Hearing none. All in favor, please. Madam clerk? I will allow a roll call.
Commissioner Holt-Salvin?
Yes.
Commissioner McMasters?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
No.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
No.
And Chairman Morris?
Yes. I intend to move on to tomorrow for a final vote.
I move to approve to replace position for a legal assistant, grade three, for the county prosecutor's office.
Motion.
Support.
Second, for I D B. Any questions or discussion or questions to talk about in a day's refilling of the county's seat? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I move to approve the following fiscal policies. Federal grant compensation policy as presented. Approve the fund balance classification policy as presented. Approve the capital's asset management policy as presented. Approve the federal grant management policy as presented.
I would ask to move. Support. And now supported. For corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Commissioner carries.
I move to approve the approval of the following journal entries. Journal entry one one. Eleven, one one one, dash two hundred, seven seventeen, zero two five. Credit, one one one, dash one seventy two, dash seven seventeen, one one zero 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 for eight hundred and ninety seven thousand one hundred and seventy two dollars. As has Office eleven, two thousand and twenty. Also approve journal entry two, that have one one one, dash one seventy two, dash eight one one, one zero zero zero. Credit, one one one, dash two oh two, dash eight one one, one one one, zero zero. Fifty nine thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars, as has A thirty for two thousand and twenty. Also approve journal entry three, that have one one one, dash one seventy two, dash eight one one, one zero zero zero. Credit, one one one, dash two oh two, dash eight one one, one one one, hundred for three thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars, as has July thirty for two thousand and twenty.
I would move to move, that's our word. Commissioner Webster, questions, discussion? Hearing no. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Commissioner carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. I would like to uh move that the new Chiawasi County COVID nineteen employee isolation and quarantine policy for COVID nineteen.
I have a motion second for an item that's been added to the agenda. Madam clerk, we have awarded uh a motion to accept and put on file Chiawasi County COVID nineteen employee isolation and quarantine policy. We have, it's basically adding.
That would include.
Let me say. Any question, discussion on the item?
I can just highlight for you, so we've had a few employees over uh last several weeks who have either been exposed or uh to COVID from family members, et cetera. And so they've had to go in and get testing or they've had to stay home. Uh the health director has suggested uh that we draft a policy and he drafted uh I'm sorry, about two thirds of this one and I drafted the last part about time reporting. And so what this will do is it sets out the rules so that it's the same for everyone. So in the event that you are, you come down with this or you get exposed to it, you go in for a test, you have to use your vacation time while you're waiting for your test results to come back. If you are out for it, I believe that's what it was. And then if you're out for it, you um you will report your time under the COVID line, which is something that you guys created during the um and at the beginning of the pandemic when everyone was out and the offices were closed. That's the only time that line item should now be used in time reporting. However, if an individual decides to travel, they decide to expose themselves, they decide to go to a hotbed area on their own volition and accord, it's out through day to day activities that they would normally engage in, they're gonna have to use their own vacation time to self quarantine and not uh pay any kind of paid time.
How would we determine?
Well, if they go on a trip and they request vacation time and then they come back ill, we had this happen in another office uh already once.
So we asked them where they're going on vacation or?
Well, they volunteer. They had to put in further vacation time and ended approved.
Ended approved, is where they're going or?
No, they had vacation time to stay.
I know that I've got, if I'm working for a private or a state and I have to report to school or something. In fact, before I can even go into work every day, I got a pass, a little quiz. And I take my temperature and it'll tell me right away whether I'm going to work or not. So I'll be able to do something here like that.
Yeah, that's the United States of America, right?
There you go. Any other questions or discussion on this new policy? You'll have a chance to review it tonight. To hearing all the discussion on the light up page that's been added to the agenda, all in favor of moving it forward, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Nay, move on to the other.
Mr. Chairman, that was my finance administration committee.
Thank you. Now we'll move right into your economic fiscal development committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve that L dash four oh two nine tax rate request as presented and instructed the chair and the clerk to execute the same thing.
Or the motion. Second, I may question the discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I move to approve the waiver of fees for the city of Langsberg on the construction of an outdoor amphitheater in La Theater at McLean Park in Langsberg.
Support. I wish I had a support, that'd be something we've done previously for other municipalities, so seems fair.
Except.
Except.
That they, we did not waive the soil erosion fees for Chiawasi Township when they built their hall. We did not waive their mechanical and their electrical inspections as we're going to for this one.
Why?
So we don't, those are outside contractors, we don't control what the state Michigan does.
We waive them, try to be, I wonder.
Then we don't uh, the state handles our mechanical and electrical. Actually, our electrical is done by diesels and Duran, so we can't really tell them they can't charge them to come out to do an inspection. And then the same with the soil erosion is our health, our environmental health and.
So how are we waiving the fees for?
I don't know, like we waive.
Are we picking up the bill?
Well, you guys never, you never reached a conclusion at the meeting of the committee on which direction you wanted to go with it.
It was kind of.
So what do you want to do?
Move it forward and here we are now, we gotta do it.
I was about to ask you, and then we wanted to move forward, but we didn't have. You didn't reach a conclusion.
Didn't reach a conclusion, but.
I, for one, feel most comfortable following the status quo, what we've already done.
That's what I said yesterday. It's not the kind of deal they write themselves, but it's, I don't know, a little vague before.
Anything else?
Can I change that then?
Who's second?
Yeah, well, I didn't leave the motion.
Yeah, I'll change the motion. The clerk will, who will the second?
Probably word that.
Well, I'm sure if it's on the building permits, all the building permits, I hope we would be waiving.
Yes.
Other Pete's, which is a vendor of ours, and Pete can waive that because it works for the county, but everyone else we can't.
And so approve the waiver of building fees. We say the word building?
Yes.
So we we also, so this is uniform in the future. We need to adopt policy or or is this something Brian's gonna remind us every time that this is what the norm is?
Well, you can, you can do it one of two ways. I mean, you could you could adopt a policy that municipalities or participating entities, school districts, whatever you like all that are governmental jurisdictions, you not have to pay for building fees. However, we need to also talk to Pete about that because it involved him waiving something that was part of his company.
What did what did we do for the G I S in this one? Did we adopt the policy on that or?
We just talked about it.
I don't really want to add the policies, so I guess we just all need to remember that. We leave the building from the fees.
I I would change my motion to read. Approve only the waiver of building fees for the city of Langsberg on the construction of the outdoor amphitheater in La Theater.
We'll keep the same motion support with a different wording. Commissioner, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any discussion, questions? Item B. Alright, hearing no other discussion on the item, all in favor of moving it forward, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carries.
I move to authorize a expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars from race management fund for the construction of of a bathroom at Lionel Road.
Support. Any motion support for any C? Questions, discussion?
So I'm deeper than that.
Yeah. So I have received contact from constituents, but also employees. And granted, I understand this, I understand what the race management fund money comes from. It's not tax, it's not, it's not tax revenue money. Reception is reality. Everybody is, not everybody, but people are asking why are we building a ten thousand dollar outhouse when you're on length of law? So just to make it clear, this is ten thousand dollars from race management fund, which is not tax dollar funds. It's money that comes from the landfill. That they are not even legally uh bold enough to give us anymore, but they continue to give us and then it funds projects where we use it to fund projects for our parks. But like I said, perception is reality and a lot of people. I said, perception is reality, and a lot of people are asking, you know, why are you, why are you doing this, but then you're approving a ten thousand dollar house, but.
Should we put that in the motion?
No, I'm just saying, just for clarification, if anyone's watching the video or wants to ask about it tomorrow, we discussed it tonight, this is not taxpayer funded money, I don't want to say this is restricted funds, but it is kind of restricted funds.
They are restricted.
They are, they are restricted funds, and we can only use it for certain things, and we use it for, for recycling, we use, we do our parks, for grant money, um, projects like this, um, it's just, it's a little frustrating because, uh, certainly not the public, including our employees, I understand that, so we can't, it's not the one amount of money, except a lot of money, and we're, I mean, if I had, we could spend some of that, so. I'm not sure about this, but there's no big difference here.
Thank you, Commissioner McMasters. Anyone else? All in favor of moving item C forward, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, then, this is economic, and this is a global committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Plomin, it's time, we'll, uh, see if there's any report, I'm opposed, it's eighteen quarters.
I'll need a report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McMasters, now, finally, we'll move on to our, the services committee report, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, we have one item, I move that we authorize the health department to post and refill exposition for registered nurse grade nine, dependent on successful grant funding.
Forward. And move this forward for the bidding for the last year's, and you, Commissioner Johnson, for instance, always, and to discuss your questions, hearing none, all in favor of moving item A forward, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, and we'll move on to our chairperson report, Commissioner Root for the chair. And I think we'll move on to our coordinator's report, I go on, anything?
Couple of things, uh, now that, uh, after, after the items to move forward tomorrow, uh, like I said, we'll set up a process to collect information, uh, related to who is interested in that, start kind of gathering, uh, facts of how this will impact budget, uh, this is the only way that, uh, sort of a couple of the partners are gonna be able to really hit that fifteen percent mark, uh, and still maintain services like the sheriff's department, and then we will present the full list to the board, you guys can decide at that point what you wanna do with people that are under sixty, because the resolution at this point in time says sixty, or they're qualified for the retirement, which would be fifty for the sheriffs. Uh, we've been coming, came with that. Further, um, after this, we will start looking at retirement options in the next month related to murders, uh, Commissioner Plomin and Chairman Root and myself, uh, and we will hopefully have a proposal for you and or ask some additional changes, um, to record. Other than that, I would also add we are scheduling our budget meetings with each department, we're looking to begin those next week and probably continue for the next two to three weeks, depending on schedules, um, in order to set all of that up. I think that's about it. Yeah, one other thing, we're gonna try a little experiment in the office, just so all of you are aware, that the chairman agreed to it today, so, uh, beginning next week on Tuesday, uh, some of our employees in the office have decided they would like an office cat, and so they are bringing in a cat to, we'll surprise and experiment, let's see, uh, see how it goes.
Oh, audit updates, is it?
Audit is not going down yet, but hopefully it will soon, I need to get the auditors in person tomorrow.
You may vote for them.
I have voted them several times.
Right.
If I vote with them anymore, it's, it's gonna be assault.
Uh, so the state of Michigan did apply for the three hundred dollars, so, this is
on active boards, it's kind of a, uh, strange way of moving this, advancing this towards since I just can't reach the resolution. So the sheriff, or, uh, the president has signed his executive order requiring twenty-five percent match from the states, it's just backed off of the twenty-five percent match, but there is still an application process that each state must go through, and that is through FEMA. Michigan turned in their FEMA assistance grant for that yesterday. Uh, there are about six or seven states that were ahead of us that did it the day before or two days before that, so we are now in the queue. As soon as they approve that, we will go back to the referral process.
How many employees do we have that can, are, can, for those on material, you know?
The list, the list, I can't off the top of my head, I was following it for a while and I stopped on, it's, it's less than half of what we would be doing in normal. Okay, any other questions?
All right, we'll move on, is there anything else from any commissioners who've been in the county? I have bad news, I need other, the cats.
Oh.
Usually they're supposed to be.
Well, they won't be in this room.
I don't think we should have a cat.
You're deathly allergic.
Okay, first of all, yes, and I'm probably not the only citizen that may come around with this, so we're not gonna have a cat, is that understood?
As you wish.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none, move on to our second opportunity for the public. Professor George, now that I've been rocking.
Yes, sir. Just, um, when you guys were talking about that landfill money, um, whatever happened, I can't, I can't remember, um, but it seems like last year, uh, you all voted on building some recycling hazardous waste building.
That was a grant, that was, we committed to a grant, I don't think we got that grant, we get a word? That was a grant, that was through, don't get out there.
Was that the grant through Langsberg?
Well, there was that one, but there was, there was, there was a, there was a Crawford one with the soil, with soil conservation district office, the e-waste one, and then there was a grant through Langsberg recyclers, which was like Clint County, Shaiwasi County, and downtown cities, et cetera. Both of those are grants, I believe.
Yeah, I, I think they're just on hold, and, and I might, they, those grants maybe don't have something to do, but I do know that there were several grants like, uh, fire and ammo areas, and the state has put those on hold, or a better term would be they haven't awarded them yet because they don't know exactly how their finances are gonna shake out, if they're going to give federal monies, uh, these tax revenues, where they're gonna fall, a lot of that stuff may get taken care of in December, either yes or no, depending on the funding at the state level and what's gonna come from federal, state monies, it's all kind of held right up there, because we had a couple of grants through the Suss Alliance that were, they were told, they were, they were getting ready to present, you know, hold. So, a lot of that stuff is on hold, especially through the DQ, that would be the one in Langsberg. All, all I remember, all I remember was, was, uh, there was talk on, uh, we, we needed this building because we're getting all of this hazardous stuff that comes in, uh, when we have the collections.
That was the e-waste one, that was the one that Crawford was representing, and, um...
Yeah, let me, uh, then there was a proposal for us to take some of the waste management monies and make a covered area.
Yes.
Like it, uh, for a better term, at the old title plant on twenty-one, and at the, maybe at the, uh, at the sewer plant in the Wasso, where e-waste, the gondolas, and e-waste to be put in those, in, in the gondolas, and of course, the question is, they have to probably fence, they have to, if someone is available, because a lot of times, a lot of stuff will end up in the gondola unless you, you know, control, control the access, and that was talked at great length, and it was a very positive, you know, yeah, we should be able to do that, and again, that money that might have come from the state for that grant is hanging out there.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, and may, I mean, or may all flood out December first, you know what I mean? Yeah. Well, I don't remember, I, the, the, the way that came to me was I, I can't remember that we had a, a ribbon cutting on that thing, and I'm thinking, oh, wait a minute, did we ever?
No, the proposed site was, was it two hole?
Two, it wasn't a three, well, the one other there were two, but they might have wanted Langsberg two because if they get that crusher or waiver, or that, you know, all that, it will be right there on the property that's, what is it, city or school property, and it will be controlled, might be one there too, I mean, that was kind of part of it, it was. Okay. Well, one, one last thing on that, and if anybody has any, um, uh, computers or anything that they, uh, this, this tactical type stuff that they need to get rid of and you can't put them in a, in a dumpster, we'll also PC on, um, uh, PC on Hurley Avenue, P recycle stuff for free, so, just about it.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to raise a vote this time?
Um, I, I think it was, you know, the question about that CPL money, and Caroline says the economy do, that should pay that employee when she wants something, right, is that what they're gonna be paying for? But they can only do CPL work, or can they do other work as well? I didn't, I didn't get that answer.
So there's a percentage form, Caroline?
Well, for the ones that are in the office right now under vitals, definitely a percentage, but this person would be designated strictly to do the CPL functions.
So all of her pay would come out of that fund?
Yes.
Or is paid, or, I don't know. Well, the only thing I got is, my hand one of this, if you go in three and a half hours a day, and she come in in the morning, and then all of your CPL people come in the afternoon or vice versa, are we gonna save it? Because insane people are still gonna have to pick up that slack, or if you have her come in two and a half days, we're gonna have to designate that it'd be better to come in two and a half days and get your CPL than the other days, because if they don't come when she's there, she, or he, they're gonna be sitting there doing nothing, and then your staff is still gonna have to pick up that slack, or is there a way that they can work that out with the people? No.
We don't have to go, that's what's her job.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
They can process, they can process clients, there's a lot of work that gets done through the, the, uh, state MSP website with three moves, there's a whole set of processes that have come down the line, that that, that gets, has to be done, and there's all sorts of stuff that gets done.
So it isn't just, it isn't just at counter at that time, is what you're saying.
Right, that's what I'm saying, she's got a lot of work, but there's a. In the CPL.
Yeah. I think she can handle it, we don't have to. All right, anybody else? Me, you, Dr.